I'm going to go ahead and then call the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting of October the 12th, 2021 to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. And city clerk if you will help me on this next one. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Are there any members of the public, city clerk?
So far I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you.
No hands are raised.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to item four, special meeting. Item A, receive presentation from the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee, which will be presented to us by the Chair, Rich Wong, and I will turn it over to staff as well as the Chair.
Hello everyone. My name is Rich Wong. Can everyone hear me okay? Good. So I am the Chair for the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee and is the city clerk going to be sharing the slides?
I can, just one moment.
Thank you Melissa. This is my first go around so be gentle with me. I even wore my San Bruno shirt for you. Okay, looks like the slides are getting ready to come up. It says that you're sharing but obviously it's a black screen. Oh, there it is. Nope, no it's gone. Okay. All right, there it is. Okay, so again, thank you. We'll try to make this brief as possible. If you go on to next slide, I will share with you who the committee members are. My name is Rich Wong, I'm the Chair. I just wanted to take the time out here and just say that I'm extremely proud of the members of our volunteer committee. Dana Robinson, who's the Vice Chair, Peter Carey, who's a member, Robert Reichel, Rico, Linda Boscono, Chad Keel, Rhonda Boone, our council member liaison is Linda Mason and Officer Scott Rogie is our police liaison who we can do without. He's been absolutely tremendous for us. I am extremely honored to have held this position for this year. It's been a challenging year due to COVID with a lot of things that I had wanted to do but were not able to do. So I will make the brief as to what we have accomplished. So we'll go on to the next slide. So what our main activities are and accomplishments is to do the Neighborhood Watch Program. So here we try to assist with existing Neighborhood Watch Groups and encourage formation of new groups. We also advertise Neighborhood Watch Programs on San Bruno Police Department's website, Nextdoor, and San Bruno City, CityNet. We are currently attempting to acquire new groups via a new program and that's on the next slide, where we are working actively with our Police Chief, Ryan Johansson, with a program called Chat with the Chief. And here we've been very successful. We've already had the Chief, or the Chief has already participated in four meetings so far and have several more scheduled. One of the goals of this program is really to acquire more Neighborhood Watch Groups. So amongst his chatting, he will interject also that Neighborhood Watch is a good thing and we would most likely get a lot of contact with that. As a result of these talks, you know, we've already acquired a new group in the Spyglass Hill area. And we have tentative dates at San Bruno's St. Roberts and other areas throughout the city. Next slide please. Other activities that we were able to accomplish this year, we did hold National Night Out for 2021. We held it in several venues in August, Marymont, my community, Seacliff was the other community, and Shelter Creek. Due to COVID, there were a number of the Neighborhood Watch Groups that did not feel comfortable meeting in groups. So we respected that and continued to, were able to meet outdoors, masks, had everyone mask in those three locations that I just held or just shared. We also, the Police Department also held Coffee with a Cop at the Bay Hill Starbucks back in August. And next slide please. So the goal for 2021-22, the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee is making an effort to work with other city committees, such as the Community Preparedness Committee. We've been sharing with them some information. We actually have a member whose husband is part of the Community Preparedness Committee, so that makes it a little simple. And then our committee strives to continue to work with Chief Johansson and the Police Department to establish more Neighborhood Group, Watch Groups, so they encompass the majority of the city. And we really look forward to in-person events in the future. Next slide. So when we meet is on the second Thursday of every month at seven o'clock. Hopefully one day soon we'll go back to City Hall in Conference Room 113. But right now we have, I'd like to say since COVID began, we have been able to execute every month, meeting by Zoom with members who are not exactly technically savvy and still been able to get on every month since COVID. So I'm very proud of that, very proud of the committee to be able to do that. Obviously our agenda is Neighborhood Watch and event planning. The meetings are open to the public, so please join us whenever you can. Any questions? Okay.
Through the mayor, no questions, but I just want to thank you and thank all the members of the committee for your hard work. And this was indeed a challenging year and to maintain continuity through your meetings throughout all of the COVID craziness is a feat unto itself. And I really appreciate all of the, all of the working dedication from you and all of your members. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't know who wants to call them out.
I'll go next to the mayor. I think I'll jump in. I just want to thank you for the work. I did attend the chat with the chief for the San Bruno Now Group and I look forward to the St. Roberts one as well. Is there, is there a schedule of these events somewhere that, that can be shared with the public?
Yeah, I think Officer Rogie has a schedule. I hope he can probably reach out to you and provide you with that.
Okay, great. And then I also just wanted to ask that the city council has an initiative of stronger governance. And so if there's anything that the council can do to better support the committee, it would be great to hear from you. It doesn't have to be now on the spot, but just want to make sure to open that door because we are looking for feedback as we continue our conversations around stronger governance at every level of the organization.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. You know, we do also like to work closer with city council and, you know, we have ideas during our committee meetings and love to be able to share those ideas. Some of these just off the cuff, so I know you are the liaison for us. You know, when we have an opportunity where we can get some time from you, I would love to be able to share some of that progress with you so that you can communicate to the rest of the council.
Would love to. I will reach out to you right after this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I saw the mayor's hand was up a little while ago.
I think he dropped and he was waiting to get readmitted.
Oh.
Yeah.
I know you guys have a busy schedule. I'm welcome to stay on, but if you guys will have me, but I'm sure you guys want to have dinner or something.
This is just the beginning, Rich. We've got another council meeting after this at seven.
Oh my goodness. You got a busy schedule, yes.
So you're okay.
Okay.
Any other colleagues?
Okay, so with that, thank you mayor. Thank you for the time and I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve. Thank you.
Thanks Rich. Yeah, Rich, thank you very much and please, I'm sorry for the activity challenge I just had. But please pass on to the committee because as you said, Michael and I know firsthand who both served on that team. But it's just, it is important, it is about the communication and getting out there and it's been more challenging than it have now because of the COVID, but you're still, all of you folks and Mr. Rogie, we're here many, many years in dedication of service, not only at the swim pool, but also in law enforcement to the city of San Bruno. I know you'll be retiring at some point soon, so I think I'm just a little jealous. But aside from that, want to thank you for everything. Rich, if you please convey to the committee and to the city.
I will. Thank you for very nice words. I will communicate that, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the next item under the special meeting. And the reason we're here is to now bring in, to receive a presentation from the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. And that also will be from the Chair, Dorothy Carmichael. Turn it over to you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Dorothy Carmichael and I am chairperson for the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. And tonight I will be giving you the annual report regarding the San Bruno Senior Center. This presentation includes information on the following activities and services offered throughout the past year and the pandemic. And you'll see the agenda before you. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, the Senior Citizens Advisory Board continued to meet monthly on Zoom. And that was a challenge because most of us probably didn't even know what it was before. And now we're become very proficient at it. There's only one person missing from this picture and I believe she wasn't there that day and that is Priscilla Martinez. The Senior Advisory Board consists of one representative of the art membership, one member of the nutrition site council, and five at-large members who are voted on by San Bruno residents 50 and over. The next election will be held in February of '22. And we're going to start all over again. During COVID-19, the senior staff and volunteers served 30,603 meals. Both grab and grill meals and delivered meals were offered throughout the pandemic to seniors living in San Bruno. This amounted to approximately 160 home-cooked meals each day. And you could see the breakdown on the chart before you. And this is an astronomical venture. And I know of many people that received meals that would have had difficulty preparing their own meals each day. So it was a real benefit. During the pandemic, it was important to keep the older adult population engaged and active. We went from being very involved in doing something each day to doing nothing each day. So it was kind of... So it was kind of a traumatic situation, even on my part, because I was a very active person, and, uh, thinking, looking at my calendar, which was absolutely empty, to trying to find a spot on it to put another event. Social distancing and online activities were offered throughout the center closure to ensure the seniors continued to be active and engaged. And you'll see, uh, the monthly newsletter information, social distancing activities, and Zoom virtual programs. So there was, uh, a nice variety of things that people who wished to could be involved in to keep, um, connected. The seniors in San Bruno continued to contact the center to get information and referral services. Tax prep questions are the most asked question between January and April. The second most asked is about food services and delivery. The meal services provided throughout the pandemic would not have been possible without the help of twenty volunteers who returned to the senior center during the closure. The hundred and sixty lunches could not have been prepared and delivered without their help. We are thankful for the ongoing dedication of our senior community and volunteers, and, uh, let's not forget the staff, because they were incredible. We also brought back some of our part-time staff to help with the tasks that volunteers can't take care of. The staff set up the rooms daily for the various activities, do data and class computer input, and help sanitize the kitchen and dining room after lunch services. This year, the senior center will work towards the following. McGee? Unfortunately, it won't lose. I could read it. There you go. Okay, sorry. Some of the goals for, the goals for the coming year, twenty-one, twenty-two, introduce seated yoga class to accommodate seniors with mobility issues. Co- collaborate with public works and community development to replace trash enclosure damaged in June two thousand seventeen accident. Collaborate with public works and community development to re-stripe and repave the parking lot to ADA specification. Work with ecology to introduce compas bins, compost bins in dining room and educate the community about composting. We did have one tragedy within our group, and we did lose one of our members. In May, the San Bruno Senior Center lost board member Joanne Tracy. Joanne was very active in ART, on the executive board, attended day trips, and played in the Pedro Gate each week. She was my best friend. Didn't mean to lose you. And, and I do, uh, like to just give a personal note at the end of my, uh, prepared, uh, presentation, which was prepared by Danielle, and thank you very much, Danielle. You're a great help. On a personal note, I'd like to make some comments on what it has meant seniors to return to our beloved senior center. A lot of work has gone into this progress, and I'm sure there were some, there was some trepidation with the opening that happened in July. I have attended this senior center since nineteen ninety-four. That's twenty-seven years ago. It's hard to believe I've got grandkids younger, I've got grandkids younger than that. I would like to point out one specific day recently, which was on a Friday, and I'm a People Watcher, and it was a full house with music playing in the background. We have music every day. I was watching a man standing in the doorway, dancing by himself to music. He was wearing a mask, but I could tell he was happy. I said to myself, that's what it's all about: happiness. People are staying longer after lunch just to be able to visit with friends. Classes and sports activity have resumed, and there is an atmosphere of joy. The volunteer staff and teachers have been fabulous, with the well-being of the seniors in mind, thanks to all that have worked so hard to keep us safe and still be able to congregate. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much for the report and presentations. Any questions, uh, from colleagues? Not seeing any at this time. Dorothy, if you'd just hold on, uh, for a moment, well, oh.
Sorry.
All of a sudden, magic. Medina and then Councilmember Hamilton.
Eric, thank you. Uh, Mayor Medina, um, I've been, uh, fortunate to be able to help out occasionally, uh, with San Bruno Alliance, and, um, it really is amazing what gets done there by the staff and by the volunteers. Um, they do an amazing job, and I, I wanted to make sure to thank you, uh, as the advisory board, and, uh, also, uh, publicly let everyone know how, uh, how appreciated we are of, of all that effort.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Uh, very, very similar comments. I mean, the, the services that are provided to our seniors through the senior center are vital in any year, but especially during the COVID year, the, the, um, ability to adapt and still be able to get out so many tens of thousands of meals to, to folks is, is just amazing. And, um, we're so glad that we're able to have the, have it open and have people, um, back together again, and I really appreciate the anecdote you, you shared there at the end. And, um, I echo, uh, and I'm sure all of our, all of the, uh, the council echoes, um, our thanks to you and to, um, the, the board, the volunteers, and the staff who make it all happen. Thank you.
Do you know the comments I'd want? Councilmember Mason, if there's anybody else, if they would raise their hand down, please.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you noticed the difference with, um, through the pandemic, the importance of the community just staying together. I know, um, I have a very dear friend who lost her husband, who's a regular at the senior center, and I was talking to her yesterday, and the friends that she's met at the senior center that she's had for twenty-plus years, um, have really helped her to get through this very difficult time in the middle of COVID. And so I'm curious to know if you've seen a difference having everyone back yet, and, um, any strains that, you know, the pandemic has had on, on our seniors here in San Bruno.
Yes, I think it was, it was a strain, and people are still coming out of it. I had one of my friends who just came for the first time today. I had talked to her earlier in the week, and she, she ventured out, and, uh, she was just, I could see a difference in her, and I could see a difference in the people. And, uh, we're just so happy to see each other, and, uh, it, it, it's, there are no words.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, and so sorry for your loss.
And, uh, as you've indicated, you've been, um, to the center, and it's been your second home for quite some time. And one of the things is when the doors opened in August of nineteen eighty-seven, that what it was to have a, a board that was primarily elected by the, uh, members of the community. And yes, when I was on city staff and having to ask folks in the door for their ID to check their age, the comments and, uh, thoughts that were offered to me as a young man were inciting, uh, enlightening, as well as, uh, finding out how long everybody has lived in town. But also what it was was the volunteers. So that those that maybe work at the rec center now work at the front desk at the senior center as a retired, uh, retired. And so really, it has always been on volunteers and the board that has worked collaboratively and collectively with staff to ensure that all these programs and activities get done with minimal staff, but a lot of love and support from all the volunteers and from the board. So on behalf of myself and the council, please pass that on to the board when you have your next Zoom meeting. And Dorothy, if you'd just hang on, what, uh, this will conclude us, but what I'd like to do with you on the, uh, on the Zoom call, please, is we are going to adjourn this meeting. I'm going to adjourn this meeting in honor of your best friend, uh, the former member of the board, Joanne Tracy, and this council will meet again at seven o'clock. But at this moment, we're going to adjourn in, uh, her honor and memory.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again. We'll see everybody at seven. Take care, Dorothy. Thank you again. We'll see everybody at seven. Take care, Dorothy.
Okay. Thank you so much.
...
Okay, good evening. I think, uh, is everybody, are we ready to go, City Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you kindly. Go ahead and call the San Bruno City Council meeting of October the 12th, 2021 to order. May I please have roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Um, and if I could, uh, I'll go ahead and lead the pledge this evening. We can get the flag. And if you're ready, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is the council policy to refer matters raised in this forum after investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act, if this council is discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. At this time, if there are any folks from the public that would wish to speak on items not on the agenda, it would be appreciated if you could, uh, raise your virtual hand. Let's see that there's any on the phone. City Clerk, I'm not seeing any. Am I correct?
Correct, Mayor. I see no hands raised.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item number four, announcements and presentations. The first one is item A. A cleanup event will be held on Saturday, October 23rd, 2021 at 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The event location is at 975 Sneeze Lane, and residents may drop off latex, paint, bulky items, e-waste appliances, and bags of garbage. Residents are prohibited from dropping off dirt, rocks, or concrete. This event is open to San Bruno residents only, and participants will be asked to show identification, showing their San Bruno residences. To see if San Bruno has partnered with Recology and San Bruno is able to offer this event, which is happening at this year, and we look forward to it. Going on to item B. Donate new or gently used coats for kids and children now through November 1st. Thank you to Recology for hosting this event, San Bruno, uh, for helping keeping the families and then the youth they know. Even during COVID times, they still collect the, uh, package to distribute those to families. So, uh, again, would be very much appreciated for those that are able to participate and donate. Um, for, uh, oh, and I'm sorry, I left out. Very important is where are the locations? Where you may drop these jackets and donations off. One is at City Hall, which is at 567 El Comino Real. One is at the library, which is 701 West Angus Shelter Creek condominiums, located at 701 Shelter Creek Lane. And then, Intro Real Estate Services, which is located at 180 El Comino Real in San Bruno. Now we'll move on to the next item, which is item C. The city of San Bruno is working, uh, and I'm going to actually ask if we could, the city manager, to go ahead and announce this. And so I'm going to read the whole thing, not to take away.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Medina, um, to the city council members of the public, Javon Grugan, city manager. Uh, just two quick announcements. One of them is on the agenda, and the other one will be due. Uh, the first one is with regard to our Crystal Springs, uh, road closure. Uh, so the city is working in collaboration with uh, Sa- San Mateo County to clear trees and landscaping along Crystal Springs Road. That work will occur October 18th, the Monday through October 22nd, uh, and the road will be closed from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's a significant project. Uh, it could have been done over several weeks uh, with intermittent closures, but given the breadth of the, uh, wildfire mitigation and safety clearing of the, of the treaty that have overgrown into the roadway, the decision was made to close the road, uh, for an entire week, uh, so that we can work collaboratively. The city beginning, uh, from Cunningham Way going up, uh, and the county working on that, uh, southern portion of the roadway next to Juniper Sarah Park. And so, uh, shown on this slide is the, uh, area of the roadway that will be closed, beginning at Cunningham Way, uh, going west, uh, up to Crystal Springs Terrace. And again, that will be for an entire week. Uh, there will be signs posted. There will be a turnaround area for any cars that, uh, do traverse Crestmore Drive, uh, and need to turn around, uh, and take the detour route. Uh, we know it will be an inconvenience. Uh, unfortunately, sometime you have to get off the treadmill to fix it, uh, and that's what we're doing here. Uh, it's an important project uh, for the community, and we just wanted to take a moment to, uh, remind the community. Notes have been posted on social media, uh, as well. The next project is not on our agenda, uh, but it is a very important community meeting that we will be having, and this meeting, uh, has been scheduled for Monday, October, uh, 18th at 5:00 p.m. The Zoom, uh, the virtual meeting, Zoom information, uh, will be on the city's website and is provided on the screen. Uh, we are, uh, sending this mail out, uh, to the neighborhood, and there is a proposed project that is a total of six stories tall, uh, eight hundred and six, hundred and thirty-six units, located at 732 to 740 El Camino Real here in San Bruno. It is a exit SB Senate Bill 35 project, a streamlined, uh, housing project that, uh, It is a S-C-S-B Senate Bill 35 project, a streamlined, uh, housing project that, uh, the city must process within, uh, a, uh, rapid timeframe. We have sixty days to do an initial review, uh, and the project, uh, because it has fifty percent affordable units, uh, will require, uh, to have a final decision by the end of, of the calendar year. Uh, the city's discretionary ability may be limited on this project, and so, uh, we, we will have a community meeting, uh, on Monday to 18th to inform the city council and the community about this project. Uh, the project is also seeking a State of California Equity Bonus Law waiver to allow for additional height. Uh, the, the public will remember, six stories, uh, for our code is not allowed in that area, but with state equity bonus, uh, six stories may be allowed, and, uh, we will be, uh, undertaking the required review of this project. But it is an important, uh, project. It does provide significant affordable housing. Uh, uh, it provides for the hundred and thirty-six units, a total of twenty-five parking spaces. Uh, and so, uh, we are, uh, very much aware, uh, how that may be received in the community, and just wanna be very open and transparent about this development application that the city, uh, has seen. And so, uh, the, the, the meeting information will be posted to the city's website, and this mail will be sent to the, uh, I'd say three hundred foot radius to the surrounding community, and we will also, um, advertise the meeting, uh, on the city's social, uh, media channels, uh, just to get the word out. That concludes the announcements that I have, uh, and I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, City Manager, for those announcements and updates. Moving on to the next item, which we have is item D, Issue Proclamation, Announcing October 23rd through October 1st, 2021. As read Ribbon Week, there is a proclamation for the, uh, police chief, and, uh, I won't read all the whereas's, but, uh, maybe toward the bottom portion. Whereas Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in communities across the nation on October 23rd, 2021 through October 31st, 2021. And whereas all those who reside, work, and frequent the city of San Bruno are encouraged to demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red wristbands commemorating Red Ribbon Week. And whereas the city of San Bruno community for their commits to contributing to the success of Red Ribbon Week. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of San Bruno hereby proclaims October 23rd, 2021 through October 31st, 2021 as Red Ribbon Week. Um, police chief, anything? Mr. Johansson?
Much for reading it.
We didn't hear you.
Uh, no, sir. Nothing further. Thank you very much for, uh, reading the proclamation.
Thank you very much, chief. Okay, moving on to item E. Receive update on the safe and equitable policing review, and we have a couple of presentations, and we're gonna first turn it over to the city manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, members of the city council, uh, and the public, Javon Grogan, city manager. Uh, we have a presentation tonight to give the city council and the public an update on our Safe and Equitable Policing Review project. Uh, the council will remember, uh, we launched this project, uh, in April of this year. Uh, there are a number of tasks with regard to this project that have been ongoing. Uh, and so we just wanted to take a quick moment to give you an update. Uh, I'll provide some brief introductory comments. Uh, next up, our police chief, Ryan Johansson, uh, will provide the city council with an update. And then Donna Linton from Impact Justice, uh, a, uh, a, a consulting firm that is helping the city, uh, with the phase two review, will provide an update on where we are with phase two. So, uh, this presentation agenda, I will provide a little background. Uh, we'll go over a quick overview of the Safe and Equitable Policing Review. We'll talk about the completion of phase one, and then again, we'll give you an update on phase two and take any questions, uh, from the city council. I think we all know that, um, for quite some time now, but, but really, uh, begun, uh, in earnest, uh, with the killing of George Floyd, there, there have been calls for police reform, uh, and, uh, justice reforms across the country, and, and we here in San Bruno, uh, were not, um, uh, absent from those calls, and so, uh, with, with, with the challenge comes an opportunity, and, uh, as the city manager, I made a commitment to conduct a review of the city of San Bruno's policing department, uh, really a top to bottom review, uh, with, with two phases, and, um, w- we wanna take a real holistic look, um, uh, and look introspectively at how, uh, the department polices our community, uh, and look at any areas for change, uh, celebrate anything that's being done well, uh, and be an organization that is constantly, uh, growing and recognizing that, uh, sometimes, uh, taking a step back and doing a detailed evaluation, uh, can be, can be beneficial. Uh, and so we term the project the Safe and Equitable Policing Review. And the objective of, of the project is to enhance the police department's ability to provide for the public safety needs of our community fairly and equitably, uh, through a review of the San Bruno Police Department's policies, practices, data analysis, and an assessment of community perception. Uh, we'll talk about all the intricate, um, components of, of, of this project as we go through, uh, phase one and phase two. I know for the city council, this will be a bit of a reminder, uh, because you've had a little bit of a presentation, uh, back, back in April where we went through in detail the scope of work. Uh, we'll begin with a review of phase one, and we'll also, uh, what you'll also receive is an update from the chief on new work that has been concluded since the last time, uh, you received an update. And so I won't go through any, I won't go through the full overview, but, uh, when we begin phase one, uh, the chief will give an overview of that scope of work, and then when we talk about phase two, you'll get an overview of that scope of work, and then we'll come back and conclude and, and be available for any questions. So now I'll turn it over to, uh, Chief Johansson for a review of phase one.
Thank you, City Manager Grogan, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for giving me an opportunity to give you a brief update tonight on the phase one completion, or the completion of phase one of the Safe and Equitable Policing Review. I'll go ahead and dig right in. I, you do know on the first slide here that while we're saying that phase one has been completed, it's important to understand that part of this process has been revealing the fact that this will be ongoing. Um, to, to really remain at the cutting edge and to make sure that we're being the best police department we can be is gonna require many of the components of phase one to be, uh, repeatedly, um, done over time. That kind of a continuous process of self-assessment and evaluation and, and to identify opportunities for improvement. So in terms of the scope of work for phase one, phase one was essentially an opportunity, uh, largely afforded to the department as a, as a new police chief here in San Bruno at the time, to do some internal review that would mirror much of what Impact Justice and the city manager's office will do in phase two, with an opportunity to make sure that we got to take a look at our policies, procedures, and practices internally, and to make changes that we felt were consistent, not only with our ideals and standards as an organization, but with those of our, uh, community as a whole. And so the scope of work here for phase one was to begin by sort of what I call pouring the foundation, a deep assessment of kind of who we are, where we're going, why we're going there, in an effort to distill our guiding principles, to develop a set of standards that we could use as sort of a measuring stick for policy changes, procedural change over time, to ensure that they're consistent with being the agency we want to be and our community needs us to be. Uh, getting more practical, this meant a robust policy review and revision. Uh, we'll talk about that in some length tonight, a pretty huge undertaking, but one that I'm very grateful that council and our city manager afforded me the opportunity to do prior to opening up to this a third-party assessor in Impact Justice. This also included an internal data analysis, uh, taking a look at a lot of data, most of which you have seen previously in my annual report. Uh, but nonetheless, afforded us an opportunity to actually look at some data metrics and decide, uh, based upon that data, whether or not we're going down the right path and to identify areas for improvement. Uh, we also expanded our data collection to ensure that we're collecting data, um, you know, we identified some loops or some, some holes in the data that we do collect. We'll talk a little bit tonight about those areas that we identified and what we've done to address it. Also taking a look at and revising our disciplinary practices, our training plan, and continuing to e-increase our outreach and transparency. Uh, that last one has been underway for quite some time. I think that Chief Barberini, in preceding me, was, uh, very active in really expanding our public outreach and the amount of information that we're sharing with our community, and so we tried to continue building upon that. So with this first anchor, pouring the foundation, this is information council that you have seen before, but we began by embarking on this process of asking these questions of why it exists, what we should do, and how should we do it? Um, and, and this really kind of started at the, at the very roots with, um, the entire command staff read Start With Why, E-Meth Mastery, a number of other leadership-oriented books, uh, to kind of get us on the right path, and, and then we moved on to the President's Task Force on Twenty-First Century Policing, a number of other industry-specific documents to kind of guide this process moving forward to ensure that we were coming from the right places. We're doing this deep dive and assessment. One of the outcroppings of that process was this distilled version of our guiding principles as ensuring peace, providing safety, and building community. And I know this is repetitious for you as well. You've, you've heard this from me a number of times now. But I think what's beautiful about this very simplified sort of mission statement is that it's something that a line-level officer can do day in and day out when you're making decisions in real time on the street. And that's what we really needed was sort of a set of guiding principles that are hierarchical in nature. By that I mean that number one always comes before number two, number two always before number three, and, and then number three, last but very definitely not least. And it really does give a decision-making matrix that officers can use day to day that are guided by our deepest, uh, health principles as an organization. So these have become pretty well indoctrinated to the individuals who work within the police department, and I think the end result has been positive thus far. And then digging into our, uh, robust policy review and revision, so we reviewed and revised, uh, hundreds of policies from thousands of pages, and I also talked to you about this briefly before, but just for a recap, we use Vendor and Lexible to provide the sort of cookie-cutter versions of our policies and procedures. And Lexible is a wonderful resource for us because they help us to ensure that we're staying on the cutting edge of emerging case law, which is constantly evolving, and, um, and also helps us to keep up with best practices within the industry. But it cannot be simply used, um, verbatim as it comes across to us, and so there's a constant effort of reading Lexible policies and ensuring that we're, um, adapting them to be consistent with our own ideals, standards, morals, the way we wanna police our community, um, and to take all of those policies in one fell swoop and review and revise them is a huge undertaking. Uh, in addition to the challenge of Lexible just being so vast, uh, we're finding ourselves in a period of time in which there is more legislation, and that legislation is moving faster than at least ever before in my career. Case law is emerging extremely, extremely regularly, and it is evolving faster than ever before. And we are held accountable to emerging case law as it emerged, emerges, and changing our policies, procedures, and practices accordingly. And then finally, of course, weighing our desired changes against the expert legal advice that comes not only from Lexible but from our city attorney, and, uh, making sure that when we think something is a good direction for us to move in, that it is in fact the appropriate legal direction to move in. So this was, the bulk of the phase one effort really was focused in this policy review and revision. To give you an idea of what the outcropping of that was, um, we, we focused primarily on critical policies. There's about thirty critical policies, as we identify them by that name, within the police department. This is just a highlight of the ones that we took a deep dive on and made actual, um, fundamental revisions to their content. And that they're obviously the ones that are popping up in almost everyone's mind, this, um, realm of police reform and making sure we're doing everything the best we can. But we significantly revised our use of force policy, significantly revised our avoiding bias policy. Not only, um, did we do a lot of work with de-escalation, we're gonna talk in just a minute here about what we did there, but we, we expanded the existing de-escalation policy, and more importantly, integrated de-escalation policy into the other policies that are directly related to it, like use of force and avoiding bias, critical incident response, crisis intervention. Uh, these are all key call types in, in which, uh, escalation is very important. So we've integrated de-escalation into those individual policies so that officers handling those types of calls know that de-escalation is front and center of what we do at the police department all the time. Also crisis intervention, firearms policy, our training plan, our TASER and other less lethal, uh, weapon options planning, and our personal complaints procedures are some of the, the highlighted, uh, policies that took a lot of, that had a lot of change through this process. The last two are listed in blue because they're, they're new. We also deployed a wellness plan, which you'll hear a little bit more about here in my presentation. And we, um, really significantly revised our personal appearance standards, uh, kind of added to the scope there, and we'll talk a little bit about how I think that integrates into our wellness plan and the direction we're moving as an organization. We used a number of different evaluative instruments as we looked at our policy, uh, and, and reviewed it, not only reviewed it, but revised it. Uh, among those being the Police Executive Research Forum, PERF has kind of taken best practices for police use of force and, and tried to take them to another level. Uh, they're sort of suggesting they'd wanna be the tip of the spear for change. This is, this is kind of the higher industry standard. There are both pros and cons to PERF, in my professional opinion, uh, but we have implemented a lot of their suggestions because they seem highly appropriate to what we're trying to accomplish here in San Bruno. Also, the Presidential Task Force on Twenty-First Century Policing, document that has been in circulation for quite some time, but we did use it, and it's eight pillars as, or six, it's six pillars, I'm sorry, as part of our guiding principles here. Eight Can't Wait, which you've heard me speak about before, both in council meetings and in the video that we released. Um, and then of course, the normal, the California Peace Officer Standards of Training, POST, um, sets the standards for all peace officers training in California, and so as we make changes to what we do in policy, we have to ensure that we're still compliant with POST. Uh, very, very important in order for us to maintain our certification as a policing agency, and, and a bit of a challenge as they're evolving as well. And then trying to keep up with proposed legislation, I say proposed because we didn't necessarily wait for legislation to pass before taking a close look at it in the context of changing our policies. Uh, if there is legislation being proposed that, uh, our experts were telling us is likely to pass, or, or that just made good sense, in many cases, we implemented changes that were suggested in that legislation ahead of schedule. Uh, and then of course, community safety, community safety needs and our guiding principles as factors in that review and revision as well. So here are some of the outcomes, um, of this review and revision of policy. We re-infused ourselves with this overarching premise that human life is sacrosanct, and I think this sits at the the crux of what's most important in police reform to a large degree, which is police officers embracing our roles as protectors of human life, all human life. And setting that central to our policy review enable us to remember that, uh, lethal force certainly should be used as an absolute last resort, that, that anything that can help us to avoid the loss of human life is consistent with this holding of human life is sacrosanct. As part of the Eight Can't Wait, we reclassified chokeholds as a deliberate use of lethal force. I know I've spoke with you about this before. Eight Can't Wait calls for an outright ban of chokeholds. I think as a use of regular force, that's appropriate. However, in a, in a legal lethal force scenario, uh, it, it seems inappropriate to say that it could be legal and within policy for an officer to take uh, another person's life with, say, a firearm, but would not be able to do so using some other techniques such as a chokehold. So it, it, it has effectively the same, uh, impact of telling officers that chokeholds are not permitted in the San Bruno Police Department, except in the case of deliberate application of lethal force and when you've met those standards. Uh, again, we've integrated de-escalation into all the applicable policies. I think this is important in that Lexible kind of overlooked this, and we're not allowing that oversight to, uh, hurt us here in San Bruno. We also created a standalone de-escalation policy in an effort to really emphasize to officers that we see de-escalation as central to everything we do. The reality is that for many, many years, we've been practicing de-escalation call to call. It's literally constant. But we hadn't been doing a good job of really articulating that de-escalation effort and why it's so important to use of force in police reform, so we're doing better with that now. We've really strengthened our duty to intervene language. This has been a very popular topic in the media as well, uh, for good reason. Um, on the heels of George Floyd and watching the failure of many officers to step in and intervene in that unthinkable situation, there's been calls to really strengthen duty to intervene language. Essentially, the strengthening in our case means that now an officer who fails to intervene when the duty to do so was evident and clear can be held to the same disciplinary standards and punishment as the officer committed the offense themselves. And I think this derives from a very strong message that it's, it's, it's just as bad to stand idly by while these types of things are occurring as it is to commit them yourself. We've opened our personal appearance and expression policy. This is important to me because my overarching theme here is that I, I think we hire wonderful human beings in San Bruno, uh, at the police department. And I want those human beings, the people they are at home, the people who are with their families, the people they are with their friends, to show up and put on a uniform and stay who they are when they're doing police work. There is unfortunately a trend to sort of think you need to become someone different when you put on this uniform, that you now represent some authority, that is less human, that is less you. And I think we do some of that with our institutionalized practices. Even the fact that we all wear a very similar uniform, we cut our hair the same, we shave our faces the same, we act the same in many regards. I think we're missing that human element that we're striving hard for. So this is a practical application of that for me. I opened the personal appearance standard. It's why you'll see officers in San Bruno with tattoos exposed. You'll see them with different haircuts than you might see in other jurisdictions. You'll see them with facial hair because I do think these forms of personal expression are part of reminding yourself that you are that mom, dad, brother, sister, that you are that mom, dad, brother, sister, husband, wife when you're in the uniform as well, that you didn't somehow transform into someone who needs to behave differently. We've clarified and expanded our personnel complaints procedures. So we accept personnel complaints from first party, second party, third party, through all different matter. It can be emailed, it can be a phone call, it can be a conversation face-to-face with an officer or through anyone else within the city government. We've expanded this to ensure that we're hearing all the complaints that might get filed. And then we've made all of our policies public and complied with the material disclosure laws. So our policies are all up on the website. It is a bit of a challenge to keep up with them, keep them updated there as often as they change and revise, but we're doing a pretty good job of it at this point. The next up was internal data analysis. We did a review and analysis of the previous five years of data in the categories you see here: arrests, use-of-force, personnel complaints, administrative personnel investigations, more commonly known as Internal Affairs or IA investigations, equity and training, specialty positions, and promotion internally, and our workforce diversity and inclusion. This has already produced a number of changes in practice, which are really, I think, productive for us. This information is also part of what will be in Phase 2 in the third-party evaluation. So generating the data with as much about our own review as it was making sure it would be available to Impact Justice and the City Manager's Office. And we have expanded that data collection. So we've always had these, not always, for the last, I would say, eight years, we've had standalone use-of-force reports. And I've mentioned these to you all before in the annual report. But essentially, any time a San Bruno police officer uses anything more than gentle touch in the course of their duties, we generate a standalone use-of-force report. This is not the police report, the crime report, it's a separate report that is designed to climb all the way up through the chain of command to ensure we have a close, watchful eye on all of our use-of-force incidents. We have expanded what we were reporting in that use-of-force form to now include race and other identity data, similar to what you'll see with RIPA, which I know we'll be talking about later in tonight's meeting. Call for service versus officer-initiated actions, tracking the reason for the police interaction, tracking what de-escalation tactics were used or were they used at all in a given use-of-force incident, and then employing early detection and intervention systems that help us to track the specific officers using force in case we're seeing disproportionate levels of force used or disproportionate amounts of force used by individual officers. The system now tracks that flag. It enables us to get out ahead of it. And this also included a revision that now that report has four levels of review. Typically, it will be generated by a supervisor on the street. It will then move to a lieutenant for review and approval, then to a captain for review and approval, and my eyes and approval are on every single use-of-force report that is generated within the police department. We're also in the process of implementing the Racial Identity Profiling Act data collection. And we've actually been doing this since July of this year, but we're doing it in sort of a trial basis now to learn from our mistakes while it's not live-reported. Legally, we are required to begin reporting this by January of 2022, but we could have chosen to take the route of an extension. We did not. We, in fact, implemented data collection six months ahead of schedule in July of this year. This is a really big undertaking for us. Please understand. This essentially takes every contact a police officer makes and turns it into a police report, albeit a somewhat streamlined police report. But you're looking at between 10 and 20 minutes of work for every person we contact at this point in time. The objective of that is to collect racial and other identity data and aggregate it in a way that it can be reported back to local governments so that we can take a look at that, making sure that we are being as fair and equitable as possible in our policing practices. And this will be legally required, it's important to understand, for all these officer-initiated detentions or contacts. So, or I'm sorry, not only for officer-initiated detentions and contacts. If we get dispatched to a call for service in which there are people on that call who are not free to leave, a RIPA report has to be written on each and every one of those individuals. So you can give the illustration of, say, a disturbance at a bar where we have a fight, where we essentially detain 15 or 20 people while we are dispersing the crowd. This is 15 or 20 police reports from what used to be a 30-second added notes into a call and moving on. So operationally, it's a big undertaking, albeit with a very good aim at the back end of it. I mentioned we've revised disciplinary practices. Essentially, that means that we formalize our investigations. Investigations have been formal all along. There used to be some points in the process where an investigation could be dispoed informally. And we've removed those loopholes to where if someone is making a complaint about the personnel, it is going to move into a formal investigation. There are different levels of formal investigation, but this means that everything is documented and provides us much more accurate tracking. I mentioned we've deployed these early warning systems. We've added a training needs component. It used to be that there'd be a disciplinary issue for which it was all about whether or not they were receiving formal discipline. And progressive discipline is great, but we need to identify when an issue occurs because training was insufficient, or there needs to be additional training for a specific officer or the entire staff, and so that we've added that component in. We've established a more solid continuum based on progressive discipline. So we ensure that we're tracking repeat offenses and we're ensuring that the discipline matches not only the behavior but how often the behavior has occurred. We expanded internal affairs training for all of our supervisory staff and above. And we moved investigative handling of internal affairs to the lieutenant level. I think this is also very important to professionalize our investigations. Investigations used to be completed by a sergeant. Law requires it to be completed by someone of superior rank to the individual who's committed or is alleged to have committed the offense. So moving it to lieutenant level, I think, makes it a little bit more removed from patrol and ensures that there's that added management level input into these investigations. We revised our training plan to comply with state law, POST, principles of equity and inclusion, crisis intervention training needs. So crisis intervention is a sort of fancy way to talk about how we deal with people in mental health crisis. The good news is that in the academy, our recruits are getting about 80 hours of crisis intervention-specific training. We don't stop there. We put every one of our officers through an additional 80 hours somewhere in their first year on the street service with the theory that you can now apply what you've learned practically on the street to the classroom environment to go back in and learn more about dealing with mental health, crisis, and emergency. De-escalation training, we have now brought in-house and outside. So we have six people at the police department who are now trained as de-escalation trainers so that we can train much more regularly in de-escalation. We have, in fact, implemented de-escalation training into regular briefings so that it's a topic of conversation constantly among the officers, sharing their successes and failures in the area of how they de-escalated potentially violent situations to resolve them without violence. We've talked before about the Essential Spanish Course. I'm proud to say this is well underway. Every San Bruno police officer is getting training in basic essential patrol Spanish so that they're able to conduct a traffic stop, tell someone, give someone basic commands like put your hands up or put the gun down to ensure that if we're dealing with a language barrier in an emergent situation, that we're able to communicate effectively with our community. And this is one I'm particularly proud of, our focus on emotional intelligence. Talk a little bit about that in a couple of slides, but I think that suffice it to say that this is probably the single component we could spend the most time and effort on with the most impact in enhancing the outcome of police-public interactions. Police officers are forever going to be placed in situations where they have to make split-second decisions with very minimal information and be judged for years and years afterwards by people who weren't there in the moment. And I think the only way to be assured of making the best possible decisions in those scenarios is to have a well-adjusted, emotionally intelligent individual in a uniform who is not easily challenged and is capable of processing the various mental states of the people they're dealing with and reacting accordingly. So we have a tremendous focus in our hiring process and in our training on emotional intelligence, all the way down to our practical scenarios, even when we're at the firing range and we're using firearms. We're no longer just pointing at a paper target and shooting rounds at it. We're focused on shoot-don't-shoot decision-making, even during qualifications, and having officers really consider all of the options on their belt, in their heart, in their mind before they're making decisions. And a huge amount of focus on health and well-being. Spoiler alert, I want to talk about that in a couple of slides. Increasing outreach and transparency. We talked about Citizen Rims, but this is still a really underutilized source in our community. So I'm kind of using this as an opportunity to plug it again. We are reporting crime data in your community in near-real time. I say near-real time because it's obviously a horrible tactical disadvantage to tell people where we are right in the moment as crime is occurring and what we're doing. But very shortly after that, it is automatically populated into these maps. You can see the link at the top of the screen, which is one way to access it. You can also get here through the police department's website. And this is a really great way to take a look at what's going on in your community. You can zoom in on the map and look at how many traffic collisions have actually occurred in my community during X period of time, or how many burglaries or how many robberies. You can kind of take a close look at what's actually going on. And it's very transparent. It's automatically populated from our CAD system. It's not done manually, so you can see everything going on in town. Also, the 2020 annual report. This will be an annual report. We'll issue one every year moving forward. But this was a real step, I think, in our effort to be more transparent about many of the things being talked about publicly. When communities say they're frustrated with not knowing everything about their police department, we're trying to address a lot of that with our annual report. We talked previously about expanding our survey capabilities. Yes, we created the new flyers and are surveying more people. We also are about 30 days off from deploying a wonderful new system called QHIT, which will send out automated text-based surveys to people who have called for services from the police department, also to people who've been arrested by the police departments, people who've been victims of crime in the police department. It will make it more readily available, the resources to them. So rather than a cop having to give everything to a victim at the scene of a crime, they'll receive periodic messages with access to Marcy's Law pamphlets and other pieces of critical information for victim assistance and as well as follow-up text messages on the status of their cases. It'll let them know when a case has gone to a district attorney, for example, or when a piece of evidence has been secured by the police department. This can be a huge step in transparency in surveys. Also, my chief's blog, which we're a little bit overdue for our next episode, but has been another effort for us to address timely issues and do so in a somewhat engaging format. And then Chat with the Chief, which was spoken about earlier by Rich with the Citizen Crime Prevention Committee. This is part of the listening campaign portion of Phase 1, which is to try to begin getting a recurring set of meetings out to the communities where all the communities in our city feel that they have a voice directly to the chief of police. We've held four of these so far. There are dozens more planned. There is a definite effort to try to reach every segment of our population. That is a bit challenging. So we're starting with the neighborhood watch groups because this is a pretty easy way for us to coordinate meetings that are regional by neighborhood. We will be branching out. We already have a couple of meetings scheduled with local faith-based organizations. And we'll also be reaching out to the schools to help coordinate. And I'm very open to any other ideas for how to reach underrepresented groups that would like to speak with the police department. I am bringing a Spanish translator to every single one of these meetings, so at least that language barrier will not be a hindrance to our communication. I would love to be able to bring translators for various other languages and can certainly attempt to do so upon request. Right now, what I have readily available to me is Spanish, and that will be at every one of these meetings. They've been wonderful so far. The parameter and intention we set is this is for open, respectful discussion about topics that I think we are not talking enough about. The fact of the matter is that we can sit in two different camps and talk about what we think all day long. No one seems to want to really come together and talk about really hard topics in an environment in which we respect and love one another. That's what we're trying to do with these Chat with the Chief campaigns so far, been very effective. There have been some really wonderful insights garnered on some really difficult topics, things that are being dealt with on the national scale right now. Very enlightening to see the perspective that much of our community has in those issues. So here's just some other outcroppings from this effort, right? You always run into some awesome opportunities when you're doing these things, when you're evaluating. And so these were not expected nor part of the scope of work, but they did come out about anyway. One has been real increased and enhanced use of our partnerships with like SMART for mental health-related calls, Life Moves for our homeless services, Cora for domestic violence, the Victims Advocacy Group out of the District Attorney's Office. As we're looking at how we could do things better, it becomes apparent there's some things that we may just not be really good at. We're a responsive organization. Many of these folks are ready and willing and able to help augment areas that may not be strengths. And so we've been using them much more robustly in this past year, even despite the challenges of COVID. We already talked about the de-escalation training, the patrol Spanish course. This Gracie Advanced Defensive Tactics course is very exciting to me. You know, traditionally, cops are trained to fight, like you train to fight when you're in a physical altercation. This results in these videos of cops striking people, using tasers, using batons, using fists, using feet and knees to kick and to strike. And the Gracie family, which is renowned in the martial arts realm, specifically in jujitsu training, saw a real opportunity here that if they could train cops to use control holds that don't involve restricting airways and don't involve causing injury, that they can create a much calmer exchange in these potentially violent interactions where they time can be on their side, they can get control of the situation, remain calm, and wait for additional units to arrive and take people into custody much more safely. I'll give you one practical illustration here. You'll see so many uses of force that pertain to a suspect that's laying on their stomach and has their hands underneath them. And this is very concerning to a police officer, right? Hands hurt us, so we want to get control of the hands as fast as possible. It's really hard to remove hands that are underneath someone while they're laying on their stomach. And typically, that gets accomplished through pain compliance, strikes and things that convince them to just eventually go with the program and give us their hands. Well, the Gracie training employs a body weight technique that I have watched officers that, in this training, that weigh 125 pounds, take on a 250-pound, extremely muscular suspect and by themselves, be able to remove hands from underneath them and get a handcuff on without striking them even one single time. This is really kind of revolutionary training for use-of-force, and we were part of the tip of the spear there. This is actually cameoed recently in HBO Real Sports with Bryant Gumbel. And at that first training of Train the Trainers, there were three, four San Bruno police officers as part of that certification course. So very proud to be out ahead of this. I think it's a game changer in use-of-force. Being you, even at work, I talked about this, but this is a big deal to me. I really do think we want these police officers to be the people they are, not the people they think they need to become when they put on that uniform. And so this is the explanation behind why you're seeing some changes in the appearance of people wearing uniforms like the one I'm wearing tonight. And then staff recognition and awards program. We've had awards for a number of years. We've never really formalized them to be consistent with those underlying objectives or driving principles as an organization. So now we've rebuilt an awards program that surrounds those three principles of ensuring peace, providing safety, and building community so that we're rewarding the exact behaviors that we are saying we want to see. And this has relayed into a recognition program for the public as well. It's so frequent that some member of the public does something extraordinary to assist the police department and in doing so, make their community a safer place. And we've really done, you know, thank you cards and informal things over the years, but we're now in the process of building out a public recognition and awards program so that any officer in the department can use a form to nominate a member of the public for one of these awards, and they can be recognized by the chief of police. And finally, this outcropping of a commitment to wellness and resiliency. I'm really proud of this because not only is it critically important, but this is one of your strategic initiatives. And it's coming to bear in the police department through this simple statement. I really do believe that the most important controllable factor in generating positive outcomes from police interactions is officer wellness, resiliency, and emotional intelligence. At the end of the day, like I said earlier, a very well-adjusted, physically fit, mentally fit, grounded individual is going to make better decisions in these sometimes unthinkable circumstances we put officers into. And so we have deployed what I'm calling the Whole Human Wellness Program. This is very near and dear to my heart and very active in the officer wellness space, both locally at the state level and at the national level. And so this six-component program takes into account, by the way, I'm not nearly smart enough to have come up with this. This is coming from people far more intelligent than me, do a tremendous amount of research on what it means to actually provide wellness. And so it includes these components of mental health, physical fitness, nutrition, social connection, sleep, and awareness practice. Awareness reflection practice, I should say. And so what we've actually built here is a point-based system for officers, where they get points for every time they engage in activities within these six dimensions. And as they earn those points, they can build up to earn their fitness incentive compensation, which is actually bare bones compensation added to their paycheck, been in place for quite some time, that they can earn by engaging in all these practices. So it gives them the freedom to build a wellness practice that is conducive to them, the type of exercise they want to do, or what's most important to them. And I could certainly talk for a very long time about how we've implemented and leveraged technology in these various areas in order to make these things more accessible and used by staff, but that would be something for another presentation at some point, I'm sure. Very, very proud of this whole human wellness. If you talk to a San Bruno police officer today about what we're all about and they don't mention wellness, I'll be shocked. This is all the way across the platform, very central to what we're doing moving forward as an organization. It's also largely responsible for the huge influx of lateral job applicants we have here in San Bruno. Cops want to come somewhere where they're encouraged to be healthy and take care of themselves, and that's what we're doing here. So kind of to recap, Phase 1 was the internal review and revision of department policies and practices. We have completed all the items in the scope of work for Phase 1, and we made a number of other enhancements based upon things we uncovered during that process. At the same time, we've clearly identified that this is an ongoing process of evaluation and growth, which we as a department and as individuals are wholeheartedly committed to. Phase 2 opens the same data, policies, procedures, et cetera, to the city manager and to Impact Justice for their independent review. And so with that, I think I'm turning it back over to, are you going to, Donna? We'll turn it over to Donna Linton, the consultant with Impact Justice, and she'll talk a little bit about Phase 2 and IJ's role in that. bit about Phase Two and IJ's role in that.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Medina and City Council members. As mentioned, I'm Donna Linton, and I'm a policy consultant with Impact Justice Research and Action Center. Next slide. Okay, and let's go on to the next slide. Here I will mention that we have established a very positive partnership with the city manager, Jovan Grogan, as well as Jennifer Giannos, and police chief Ryan Johansson. They have been incredible partners in this process. The other members of our team from Impact Justice include Antoinette Davis, who is a principal researcher and heads the Research and Action Center, as well as Howard Jordan, a former police chief in the city of Oakland, who since his departure from the city of Oakland has been providing consultation to police agencies across the country and really focusing on 21st century policing practices. So we're so pleased to have him involved in this process as well. We have a multidisciplinary team that includes researchers in order to ensure that the data analysis and data gathering and analysis is objective and unbiased. That coupled with law enforcement expertise will lead to good public policy, which I'm pleased to say San Bruno is very proactive in its efforts to achieve that. I want to review with you the scope of work that we've been contracted to do. The initial phase is the kickoff meetings and interviews. I had the pleasure of interviewing each member of the city council, and I appreciate the time and courtesy that you gave me in sharing your passion for public service, your impressions about the study, as well as the policing and community engagement within San Bruno. And in particular, I appreciate the suggestions that you gave to us in terms of how to better engage the city of San Bruno. In addition, we've had kickoff meetings with the police department, and we also have wanted to go on ride-alongs. We have not yet done that, in part because of the pandemic and some of the difficulties that that has presented to us. We are currently involved in the community engagement portion of the scope of work. That began in June with a lot of effort to construct an online and paper survey that can be used to gather impressions from the community about public safety in San Bruno. In addition, we have listening sessions, community listening session, that will begin in November and continue in January and February, as well as stakeholder interviews. At the completion of the community engagement portion of this study, we will provide a report to city council. The next area is really involves the police department itself. We did, we have held meetings with the police department, and I will go into greater detail about that as I go through my presentation. In addition, the data analysis and review of policies and procedures and training and all of that will follow. Next slide, please. We're doing a four-year look back at the data, going back to 2016. Howard Jordan has received some of that data and has begun his analysis. We anticipate having that completed in November. Howard Jordan also is the lead on reviewing the policies as well as training materials and training courses that are offered within the police department. Chief Johansson did a very good review of some of the policies that have been revised in the police department, and our independent review is just beginning. In terms of Step Seven, we anticipate a community report in the first quarter of 2022. That will be a comprehensive report to the city council as well as the public, and will include recommendations and a suggested implementation action plan. Next slide. I'd like to go into more detail about certain aspects of the study that we are currently engaged in. Community engagement is the first component that I'd like to review with you. That includes a community survey, a school survey, as well as listening sessions. Let's see, may I have the next slide, and then let's go immediately into the slide Okay, while we're catching up with that, we spent the summer, yeah, and let's move into the next slide. We spent the summer developing a community perception survey, and that was released on August 31st. It currently is housed on the San Bruno website. As of today, we received, we have received one hundred and seventy responses to the community perception survey. Our goal is to reach five hundred surveys, and we intend to close out the survey on November 30th. In addition to the online version, we do have printed versions of the survey in hopes of getting those people who may not be comfortable completing an online survey or may not have access to internet. Because we're trying to really dig in and assess residents' perception of safety as well as local policing practices, we are trying to increase the distribution effort, really reaching out to the community to get more responses, to actually reach our five hundred survey goal. You may have seen the public service announcement that is also on the city's website. Much thanks to Jovan Grogan, as well as Chief Johansson and the police department's video team for creating that video spot, along with Danielle Soto from Impact Justice, who's on that video. In addition, we've printed and distributed cards in both English and Spanish at public events, as well as local businesses. Much thanks to Jennifer for getting some of these cards out to downtown San Bruno businesses. And we also intend to get these cards and print surveys out to food distribution sites within the city of San Bruno. We need your help in terms of the ongoing social media campaign. Those of you who are on social media, we would really appreciate it if you would repost the video, repost the announcements about the survey, really encouraging your viewers, your social media viewers, to reach out and take advantage of giving us their opinion. Their opinion really does matter, and your help in terms of getting that word out is greatly appreciated. In addition, we've come up with a couple of incentives to encourage people to actually get all of the way through the survey. One incentive is those who complete the survey in its totality will be entered into a drawing for gift cards. Now, in those instances, the individual would need to identify their email address so that we could reach out to the winner of the gift cards. But it is important to note that the information that's provided by them is anonymous, and none of their viewpoints will be tied back to their name or email at all. In addition, we've received some, a donation of a large number of five-dollar gift cards for Starbucks, and it's our intent to go out to various places and encourage people to complete the survey either in hard copy form or online. One example of a site that we intend to go to is Skyline Community College, the community center there, and encourage that population demographic to complete the survey online and provide them with a gift card for Starbucks. In addition, we hope to go to school distribution, a food distribution site at the Title I school and encourage those individuals to complete the survey either in hard copy or online and provide gift cards to them as well. Moving to the next slide, which talks about the school survey. We distributed the, well, we gave the administration at Parkside Middle School as well as Cappacheen High School the online survey just last week. As of today, and you know, we did have a holiday yesterday as well, we have only had five surveys completed. Now, it's only been posted, it's only gone out to them in the last few days. Our goal is to get one hundred surveys there. Their voice is important because not only are they young people who may or may not have had contact with the police department, but the San Bruno PD does have a school resource officer that goes to each of those campuses, and we think it's important to see what their perceptions are of the school resource officer as well. The survey for school students to participate in is scheduled to close at the end of October. Moving on to listening sessions. We will be inviting San Bruno community residents to participate in a number of listening sessions. The San Bruno Public Library, as well as the Senior Center, have indicated a willingness to host listening sessions. In addition, we expect to schedule a number of others that will begin in November and continue in January, February of next year. We will target certain demographics in listening sessions. For example, when we look at the online surveys that have been returned, we know that a number of the respondents are people over the age of sixty-five. So, and we have noticed a far fewer number of people in those who are young adults. So we will target ways to reach out to that population, one of them being going to Skyline Community College. And the other suggestions that you have are greatly appreciated. We also will be reaching out to church groups that serve the Asian Pacific Islander population as well as Spanish-speaking population. We do have one of our researchers who is bilingual Spanish, and she will be conducting those focus groups. Councilmember Mason, you were generous in giving us the name of a member of the African-American community that you thought we should reach out to, and we will be working with him to identify people for a focus, a listening session that targets the African-American community. So these are some of the ideas that we gained from our meetings with you, as well as with the members of the police personnel, and we are open to other suggestions that you may have to make sure that we have good representation from all segments of the San Bruno community. Moving on into the next slide, our analysis also includes looking at the San Bruno Police Department, and it's our intent to gather that information through focus groups, interviews, internal survey of the police employees, as well as a workforce analysis and a four-year look back at data. Let's see, and yeah, there we go. Okay. So the police department focus groups and interviews have already started. Actually, we completed command-level personnel focus group, as well as twelve one-on-one interviews with sworn officers. And it's important to note that in looking at who we were reaching out to as sworn officers, we looked at those, we had a stratified sample of some newly hired officers, as well as those who had been on the force for several years. We wanted them at various levels of the organization and representing different demographic groups. So we've completed that, the one-on-one interviews. In November, we intend to launch an online survey that all San Bruno Police Department personnel are invited and encouraged to participate in. Again, the information will be anonymous. We will not be able to tie back any of the responses to any individuals within the police force. It's important to note that Howard Jordan is going to be our lead in analyzing the independent review of the San Bruno policies and practices, as well as training procedures. As Chief Johansson mentioned in his presentation, they have recently revised certain policies, but Howard will be looking at bias provision training, use of force, proactive policing and patrol tactics, de-escalation, body cam policies, et cetera. And when he looks at the four-year look back at data from 2016 through 2020, he'll be looking at arrests, use of force, citizen complaints, vehicle pursuits, internal affairs investigations, as well as officer-involved shootings, if there are any within that timeframe. In terms of next steps, can we move to the next slide? The next steps, data collection will continue into early 2022. The school survey closes out the end of this month, October 31st. The community online and hard copy survey will close out the end of November. The listening sessions begin in November and will continue in January and February. The police personnel survey will take place in November, and the workforce analysis should also conclude in November. The key output for the project is an interim report summarizing findings and providing recommendations to the city, and the goal for completion is end of March 2022. So with that, I believe the chief and city manager and I are all available to answer any questions.
Absolutely. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentations. Are there any questions from colleagues, Councilmember Hamilton?
I have two brief questions. First, thank you very much, both Ms. Linton and Chief Hanson, for the presentation. I have a question, I'll just go in order. The first one has to do with the RIPA program. Detailed, thank you for all that detail, Chief. Since we started the new process here in July, as you noted, it's a much greater amount of admin work for the officers than they had to do previously. Are these reports generated while the officers are still in the field, you know, during each of these, or right after each of these encounters? And does that activity perhaps get interrupted if they get, you know, if another call comes in? And then the second part of that question, you can answer them together, is, is the extra admin work causing any issues with staffing, like, you know, maintaining the desired number of officers in the field, that sort of thing?
So the short answer to your question is that the information input should be occurring in the field. We have deployed an add-on system for CAT RMS called IREMs that enables the officers to input the data from their issued cell phones while they're on calls. But the answer to your second question is also yes. Of course, that's dependent upon time and other calls per service. So it is somewhat frequent for an officer to be attempting to enter that data, only to be called out to another call and to have to do it later. There's a number of check and balances in place to ensure it gets done. All that RIPA entry is actually, has to be approved by a supervisor, and then ultimately moves over to record staff that has to scrub and approve it before it's moved off to DOJ. And then DOJ is going to scrub and approve it and make sure we entered everything we're supposed to for all the calls we're supposed to. As far as impacts to staffing, it's too early for me to say. I can say that we've seen a little bit of a reduction in some of the proactive policing time when we track an officer's time in service and out of service. We're seeing We're seeing an increase in in-service time, or out-of-service time, rather, and a decrease in out-of-service time. The impact of that is really going to be difficult to measure in any timeline, but certainly is too difficult at this early, of the, of a period in implementation.
Okay. Thank you. Understood. And then my other question is for Ms. Linton, having, regarding school survey, how is the school survey being marketed at the schools to encourage students to participate?
You know, that's something that we really are going to have to push. It's our understanding that the school principals put it out in a school bulletin. And at this point in time, it's only gone out once. So, we will be reaching out to ask them to push it through a bit further. We also think that if it can be tied to, let's say, American history or American government, those kinds of classes or lessons, or anything to do with current events, that if they can ask teachers to talk about the civic engagement, or how to engage in your community as part of a civics lesson. So, those are the thoughts that we have at this point. Any other ideas, we're certainly open to. Another strategy that we've talked about in terms of reaching out to the community would be to go to the soccer fields on Saturdays since it's soccer season, and being able to pick up families as well as youth, and really be able to talk with some of the young people about, you know, if you go to the Parkside Middle School, go online and give us your feedback. So, anything that, any ideas you have, we are welcome to them. But those are the ones that we've talked about thus far.
Great. Thank you. And thank you again for the presentation.
Any other colleagues, if you do have questions or comments, if you could put your hands up now so you can go around the room once. Councilmember Mason?
Thank you for that presentation. I think before I go into my questions, I just want to thank Impact Justice and thank the city manager and the chief, because I think nobody wants a microscope on their departments. And so, I think the response and the attitude has been very welcoming. And I just want to thank all of you for your professionalism in that. I did want to just ask around the accountability portion, or the, I think you called it, the, the investigate handling. I'm just curious to know what, what's typical. I know in government entities, you know, you have an HR team, and there might be an internal investigation or a third-party investigation, but the HR team is normally that's the independent entity, right? That's, that's handling the investigation. And so, not being familiar with police forces, how do police forces normally handle investigations within their own departments?
Yes, I can take that. So, almost all departments, all departments that I'm aware of have an internal affairs division, or in our case, we call it administrative personnel investigations. If you're smaller like us, you don't have a dedicated division for that. You have specific personnel that are trained and assigned to investigate citizen complaints or personnel complaints, use of force reports that indicate that there could be some sort of policy violation, really any allegation that policy or law has been violated. So, our process and a very, like, high-level explanation is that an investigation, an investigation gets initiated, it gets assigned to a lieutenant. Lieutenant completes a thorough investigation that's compliant with all of COVAR and due process and all the things that need to be adhered to to ensure that any discipline that emanates from that investigation will actually stick and be upheld. If there's any allegation that a law was violated, then the district attorney's inspector's office is brought into the loop, and they would investigate the criminal side in a parallel investigation to the internal affairs side that would be done by the police department. And then if there's going to be any discipline proposed, so the MOU stipulates that if the proposed discipline is in excess of a certain level, that it actually moves on to the city manager's office and the human resources department. So, that's the point at which it would move to sort of this additional investigative body that will take a look at the total report, come to their own conclusions about proposed discipline, and decide where, where things go from there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's helpful. And then how is Ms. Bear, does the, is the lieutenant the person responsible for documenting what was done to, during the investigation, what the final result was? And then is that placed in, in a personnel file or an independent file? How is, how is it documented?
Yeah, so that the investigating officer, in this case, a lieutenant in most cases, will be completing the investigative report. It's start to finish, everything that was done as part of the investigation includes all the interviews with the subject officer, witness officers, other witnesses, recordings from all, everything you can imagine would go into a big police report is going to be in an investigation like this. And then that investigation is going to be filed within an independent internal affairs file, as well as within the officer's personnel file. The duration of time it will remain in those files is governed by law. So, it depends on the nature of the complaint and the findings, but yes, everything is memorialized and then stored in these appropriate government files.
Okay. And I think, oh, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to piggyback on that and clarify that as a part of the Phase Two review, there will be a review of the current practices that frankly begin a step before what you heard from the chief with the intake process. How did that complaint come in? Sometimes it goes directly to the police department, other times it goes to the city attorney's office, or to the city manager's office, through the police department investigation. And then finally, if there's significant discipline, like termination, that city manager's review level, all of that will be reviewed for best practices, and the council will get an analysis of the current status quo, as well as any recommendations as part of the Phase Two. And so, your, your questions are spot-on asking about what do we do now? But I just want to let the council and the, and the public know that, that independent review that's in Phase Two will, will, will do a top-to-bottom review of that current process.
Great. You just have to...
Important to note that nine out of every 10 complaints that are internal investigation that occur are initiated internally by the police department. So, yeah, all of these intake procedures, sometimes the city attorney's office might take a complaint, or a citizen comes in to complain, someone might even come in to complain on behalf of somebody else. We'll accept all of those, investigate them, but most of them, 90% of our complaints are initiated internally, as a result of seeing some behavior, either a body camera footage or something that could be a potential policy violation.
Great. Thank you. And then I think as far as, just a clarification, I believe, and please do correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the chief said that this was going to be a five-year look back, and then Ms. Linton said that there was, it was going to be a four-year look back. And I'm just curious, is it, which one is it going to be? Is there...
My notes say they begin at 2016. To your knowledge, were we beginning in 2015?
I thought it was a five-year look back. That's what I, with what the chief said, I, that was my understanding.
Yeah, our internal look back, five years, wherever there's five years of data available. The same will be true for the data provided to Impact Justice, and there'll be five years of data wherever there's five years available. The data that's so far been provided to former chief Howard Jordan has been a five-year historical picture.
Okay. Great. And then I was just going to, you had asked for some, for a suggestion, I think the chief initially asked for, and I just wanted to throw out there that the downtown merchants might be a good group to meet with. I know they're, many of them are big fans of our chief, from my conversations with them, and I think they'd love to have some time with you. And then for Ms. Linton, just maybe the Skyline Newspaper, and then reaching out to Peninsula Place and Shelter Creek. And then we have some council members that have close connections with Cappuccino High School, and they might be able to connect you with some, some people who get the word out more to our high school population. But just thank you for the report. It's very enlightening, and I look forward to the next one. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. If you, if you have specific questions, if you can get those to Jennifer, and she will refer them to us, and we'll gladly follow up on them. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm very impressed with the amount of effort in this review. It's clear this is being taken very seriously. So, I wanted to acknowledge that and thank everyone for their effort. I will go ahead and send my comments to Jennifer Deanos, and one of them, easy ones, are working through the PTAs for all the different schools that are in, in our system, and making sure they're all aware of, of this, of these surveys. So, thank you very much.
Great.
We've seen no other hands. As I, we do have somebody from the public who has their hand up on this, and I'm just going to say, and, and I'll do just what was said, forward it through email, but there's other associations too in the community, et cetera. We can all, all that through one spot. So, anybody in the public who wishes to speak or ask a question, I see one speaker. See the clerk if you can bring that person in, and that will be the one speaker on this.
Yes, Rebecca Prozan? One moment, I'm trying to get Rebecca unmuted.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to unmute. My bad.
No worries, whenever you're ready.
I'm so sorry, I did not mean to unmute.
Oh, okay.
No problem. Okay. Anyway, with that, not having anything else on this topic, we'll go ahead and thank everybody for their time and presentation, and wish you a good evening.
Thank you.
So, we will move on. That ends announcements and presentations. We'll move on to consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Couple of things. One on item D, approve the regular minutes for the regular meetings of, it should read September 28th. So, just to announce that correction, and that's in D. And then depending on what happens on I, I'm going to, I will not be voting on I, because I'd recuse myself before bail specific plan, but to encompass it for the betterment of the city, in the interest of that. However, does get pulled, or if there needs to be questions or discussion, then I'm going to need to defer and then come back. Are there items that anybody wants to have pulled for a separate vote? Separate vote? Not seen any? Are there items that any would, anybody would like to have pulled, I'm sorry, have a further discussion or comment? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'd like to pull item F for a brief comment.
You?
It's item M, please.
Got it.
Not, not for a separate vote. I think just a, a comment should be fine.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to acknowledge H, I, and J, the, the grants. I think it's really important that our, our public are reminded of the work involved to get these grants. Thank you.
Okay. So, maybe because they're all, they're grants, maybe we take them collectively, if that's okay. So, I see no other items, I'm seeing none others. So, we'll begin, the beginning, and we'll go to F, let's include, adopt resolution accepting the quest, morning meter park pump station project as complete, authorizing the filing of the notice completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office, and authorizing release of the construction contract, intentioning the amount of $316,564.25. Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, I just wanted just to very, say a very brief comment on this. I think it's really important for the, the public to see that the progress that the city continues to make in completing needed work to reduce sanitary sewer overflows, that they can pollute our streets and leach into our stormwater system and eventually pollute the bay. This is critical work, and I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank all involved for completing this project and bringing it in under budget.
Thank you. Let's move on to, we're going to try to take these together, which was okay with the vice mayor, H, I, and J. H is adopt resolution accepting the Tom Lehrer grandstand project as complete. I is the adopt resolution of the city council, the city of San Bruno approving applications for the precapita grant funds in the amount of $205,635 for the rehabilitation of Pacific Heights Pathways. And J, adopt resolution authorizing to receive a FEMA grant for a self-contained breathing apparatus compressor, and authorize the appropriation in the amount of $59,100.39 required. Vice?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is incredible. These three items, Laura Field of $150,000 from Measure K due to our supervisors Pine and President Kappa. In addition to that, the San Bruno Community Foundation provided $25,000 through the Lions to fix the snack shack. Pacific Heights, $205,000, grant money to fix, to fix the pathways up there, and an air breathing equipment, another $59,000. So, you know, when you add it all up, you know, approaching half a million dollars, $410,000. And I think it's, it's worthy to, to express our appreciation for staff to get these grants through, and we're, you know, we love them, right? Grants are good. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item M. Approve the city senator responsible to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report, building greater trust between the community and law enforcement via the Racial and Identity Profiling Act. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, thank you for this. And this is a nice piggyback off of the report we just heard. I, I did double-check with the city manager, Grogan, before making this comment, so I just want to make sure it's on the records, that we're all approving the potential change, if it's okay. But I'm looking at the responses to the grand jury recommendations, and it's page three of five. And there's one, R4, where it says each LEA should provide regular updates to their governing entities on their progress toward preparing for the required RIPA data collection starting on October 12th, 2021. And it says, the response is this recommendation has been implemented, and that the San Bruno Police Department has been providing regular updates regarding RIPA data collection to city council for several months already. So, I just wanted to suggest a change to the San Bruno Police Department has begun providing updates regarding RIPA implementation of data collection to the city council. Just because I don't believe that the updates have been for, for several months, and I don't, I think that was just an, an intentional error, but I just wanted to make sure that that change would be okay to submit as our, as our response. And with that said, and that's my only comment and suggestion for, I don't know if this would even need to be an amendment, so the city attorney may need to speak, but just wanted to confirm that it was okay to make that, that change.
Would the staff have any thought whether this needs to be pulled for a later time, or any comments on that, or to pursue?
With council concurrence on that wording change, we can make the change, subject to council approval on the item, and staff does concur with the change, and it is an appropriate clarification.
Okay. So, I think that takes care of, I think that takes care of all of the consent items. Like, then keeping in mind, folks, that the announcement that I made on item D for that modification, you just heard Councilmember Mason on item M, and I will have, I am not voting on I, which is for the recusal. So, any action from council?
That's through the mayor.
Correct.
I think Councilmember Mason got, got ahead of it. And then I'm going to ask for a second, then I'm going to go to the city hall. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. And then...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Are you, I think you're talking about item L instead of I.
I apologize. Thank you. Thank you. You are 100% correct. Item L is in Larry. Thank you for that. I need stronger glasses. Okay. So, it is to be noted, it's L is the item for me being recused. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
It looks like we just lost council, oh, there he is. Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Give a thumbs up.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes the consent. Now we'll go ahead to conductive business. City Clerk.
Item six A. Let me find it, adopt a resolution denouncing hate crimes, standing in solidarity with San Bruno's communities of color to enhance diversity, inclusion and equity in San Bruno.
Okay, at this time, we're going to turn it over to the Assistant to the City Manager, Ms. Yanoz, for a presentation. And then I'm going to ask after that for Councilmember Mason.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public. My name is Jennifer Diawas. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager and the newly appointed staff liaison to the Heart Committee. And I'm here this evening to present to you a resolution of solidarity. So the item in front of you is to adopt the resolution denouncing hate crimes and standing in solidarity with San Bruno's communities of color to enhance diversity, inclusion and equity all in San Bruno. I have a very short presentation for you. It will include a short background, um, discussion about the resolution and then I'll I'll turn it over to our committee chair and vice chair and available for any questions. So we'll start with background. Uh, following the death of George Floyd back in May of 2020, the city council issued a statement condemning the death of Mr. Floyd and that occurred in June of 2020. San Bruno remains committed to addressing racial inequities best for all future generations. And following the incident initiated the two-part review process of safe and equitable policing policies, which was presented earlier this evening. At resolve, the city council requested that the Heart Committee review a resolution of solidarity and provide a recommendation to the city council for consideration and approval. The resolution was prepared by staff in conjunction with the chair and vice chair of the Heart Committee. The Heart Committee did schedule a meeting and unfortunately, due to attendance, could not meet the quorum requirement. And so at this point, staff has renewed it forward for full city council consideration. Resolution affirms San Bruno standing in solidarity with communities of color, not condoning any acts of hate or violence against communities of color. Um, and supports dismantling of systems of racism that can potentially contribute to hate and violence. And that would be through compassion, education, cooperation, respect and kindness. I promised a very short presentation and I did um deliver that. At this time, I can be available for any questions. Um, and I'm happy to turn over to the Chair of the Heart Committee, Chair Salazar and Vice Chair Mason.
As indicated, I'm going to ask Councilmember Mason at this time, please.
Thank you. And I just want to thank the um, thank the Chair Salz- thank Chair Salazar. We spoke before at this meeting to just talk about the process, so thanks for the opportunity to speak and for the supporting this um, this initiative or this resolution. So just as Ms. Yanoz mentioned, this was initiated last year after the death of George Floyd and the mayor appointed and created the Heart Committee. Um, and I have to say that the Heart Committee is an incredibly diverse committee and the selection of the Heart Committee was very thoughtful. Um, and had helped us to plan our United Against Hate last year and is now in the process of of creating, you know, the whatever the scheduled events are going to be for this year that we're working on. Um, but also assisted in writing the AAPI resolution that this council unanimously approved earlier um, earlier in the year. So it seems like we're now coming full circle where the council strongly believe that we didn't want just a resolution, we wanted action and we wanted some impact on the work that is being done. And as Ms. Yanoz just mentioned, I think that's happening. I think I would imagine that the rest of the council concurs with the review that's occurring right now with the police. So um, I I think at this point, you know, hopefully the public's had an opportunity to read the resolution. Um, it it was definitely teamwork putting it together and I'm, you know, ready to move forward with it.
And and I think what we could do is if it's available to be shared, which is going to be now, and then we'll also, we have a member of the community that wishes to to speak on this topic and has. I don't know if 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 that time, that could be done simultaneously, but that is the resolution that the Heart Committee has put forward, the council member has just spoke about, spoke of, as well as Ms. Yanoz. And then we do have a member of the public, if we could bring bring him in, please.
Mayor, would you like me to stop sharing for the timer to be displayed? There we go.
Thank you.
Uh, Paul Wepensky.
Good evening, I've got a question. Um, we spent a lot of time and effort and money on this uh, with the police department and also with the resolution. But when I read the background on the the letter that was in the packet, I was kind of disappointed that we couldn't get a quorum in the Heart Committee. It said one member resigned, but if there's nine members, there's still, we still should have been able to have a quorum. I'm wondering why that is and do we want to wait until we have a forum for them to review this document before we actually make it official? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing nobody else from the public, we're going to bring it back to council. Uh, Councilmember Salazar, please.
I just wanted to make one comment in response to the the member of the public, Mr. Wepensky. Um, and, you know, I have to say that it it when in any volunteer organization, it's it's always difficult to um, schedule activities. And most of our standing committees and commissions, there's a regular cadence for their meetings that they're aware of and so they can plan ahead. Uh, the Heart Committee is an ad hoc committee and so we don't have a regular meeting time. And so every meeting that we try to call is usually best based on, you know, best availability. And it has been difficult to to schedule the meetings. Um, so we've had a few of them. We have another one coming up soon, but you know, both Councilmember Mason and I felt that it was important to bring this item forward. And so because our alternative was to allow staff to work on this, um, you know, we we don't, we we didn't feel it was as important to to get review of the committee. We did make the the draft versions available to members of committee ahead of time in case they had comments. Um, but you know, at at some point, I do believe we'll have to relook at the at the membership of the committee and see if we can do anything to either expand it or, um, you know, poll the members to see if they're still interested in continuing. But at this point, we didn't feel it was in our best interest to delay this. Um, having the um, the the other presentation tonight, it made sense to bring this forward. And so we hope, I think both Councilmember Mason and I hope that we can get approval from the council to move forward.
Okay, now that's any other final comments or questions? Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, and just piggybacking off of Chair Salazar, I'd also say that we had a similar situation with the AAPI resolution, unfortunately. And we, I I can't remember how many times between that resolution, this resolution, that we've tried to get our committee together and it has been a challenge. I also just want to say that Ms. Yanoz can can speak better to this, but there was a whole lot of time put into this and we did not pay consultants to create this resolution. This was created in-house and it was reviewed by Chairman Salazar and myself. Um, so this really is, I feel, that teamwork and I think that we're all, I think we all supported this from the beginning and we all supported the work behind it from the beginning. So I too hope we get unanimous approval tonight. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other comments. Is there any action by council?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the motion to adopt this resolution.
Is there a second, please?
Second. You know what? Take that back, let let the let.
Yes, we'll give it to Councilmember Mason since she's on the Heart Committee. If that's okay. Uh, roll call.
Sure, absolutely.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, next is item B, please.
Item six B, receive report and appoint council members to fill the 2021 mayoral appointments for the duration of 2021.
And so based on the council act on the 17th, there is a couple more months, as you know, we rotate usually in in January. So City Clerk, can you please share your screen with the vacancies? Thank you. Oh, a little bit more.
Is everyone able to see that?
Not all of it.
Not all of it, I want to take it.
There you go.
I can scroll down as needed, I just wanted to make it large enough for the viewers.
That's perfect. Um, thank you. So what we're going to do is I'm going to go ahead and make appointments that need to be approved by the city council, of course. And honestly, what I did was try to, basing on the balancing of responsibilities and the interest that I've kind of expressed throughout the times on these topics. And if there's more questions as to why I can certainly, at that time, when a person comes up. And so I'll go down the list and if somebody's can't fulfill or doesn't wish to, just let it be known. This is on the first one, you'll see, the open space park recreation facility, that's the Crestmore High School soccer field. And at this time, Councilmember Hamilton, please, you, I've been advised you can't serve on that due to the recusal. So I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Marty Medina to serve on that. On the Recreation Aquatics Advisory Committee, I'm going to ask that Councilmember Linda Mason serve on that. On the Homeless Committee, I'm going to ask that Councilmember Salazar serve on that. On the San Bruno School Roundtable and the San Bruno Park School District, as they sometimes call the Executive Committee, I'm going to ask that Councilmember Mason be on both. And for the council liaison, there's there's one because of the fact of it was Personnel Board and Culture and Arts, but personnel, that's not personnel. So it's a couple of months and since Councilmember Hamilton has one group, I'd like to appoint that at this time. So those are my appointments and any action by the council?
I'm sorry, Mayor Medina, I do have one clarification. I'm seeing one more vacancy. I heard you say Executive Committee was that for Councilmember Mason or was the?
Mason, you're correct.
Okay, and then the SB School Roundtable was that Mason? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Mason, the last one, there you go. Okay, now we're up to, we're up. Um, Councilmember Mason.
I think that, and I may need the city attorney here, I may have a conflict with the SB PSD because my husband's on that one as well right now. I'm not, I'm actually not, not sure because I didn't know before right now, but we may need the city attorney to chime in. If it's not a conflict, I'm fine with it.
And and the reason too, just if I may, as the city attorney comes online, is that um, I've had the practice as a mayor and the vice mayor and you're going to be the vice mayor. So I thought then that's going to happen in December and it would be, you know, advantageous to have it started now, so. City Attorney? To to council members' question.
If I may, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Mason. So I think as we discussed before about your participation in other items involved in San Bruno Park School District, there is no financial conflict under the political or format of state law. So you, that that is certainly not an issue. Uh, there there may or may not be a common law conflict just by virtue of the fact that your spouse serves on that board as well. But I think you previously determined that that does not present a conflict for for you and he likely has determined the same on his end. So I don't see any legal reason at the moment why that would prohibit you from participating on those unless you feel that the appearance of that conflict is something that you would like addressed. But otherwise, um, you know, and of course, the conflict decisions are always up to individual council members. Um, and and my advice is only advice about that, you have to make a final decision. Uh, but that's what I would say in terms of that particular appointment.
Okay. And how, okay.
Are you okay with that, Councilmember Mason?
Um, I'm just, and we're in October, um, and I'm thinking the same thing as far as the timeframe and when they switch their roles. I think it should be, I think it should be fine. If there's any changes, I'll I'll speak to you, Mayor Medina.
Okay, thank you kindly. Um, is there any other questions, comments from council? I would like to have this as a motion and a second, just for the record, if that's good with everyone, so I'll look for any action.
I'll make a motion that we accept the the opponents as shown on the screen.
Is there a second? Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we are through conductive business and now we'll move on to item seven, comments from council members. First, we're going to hear from Councilmember Mason and this is in regards to item A, request the staff research approval, voting as an alternative election method for mayor and council elections and schedule presentation to the to the city council from the Center for Election Science. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, thank you. So I think for this one, this particular item, what really I'm looking for is, as this council probably remembers, when we first started talking about districting, we had a group come in that was from the Center for Election Science and they publicly spoke at one of our meetings. Um, and since then, they reached out to me and they explained the approval voting system and how it differentiates from the system we have in other systems. Um, at that time, we were having a discussion about our intent to move on district elections. And I believe at some point, the city manager said that the two may be a discussion that we could have together as we move forward with districting. And so I'm actually not so much asking for staff to research this at this time because we we don't really know which way we're going to go. But really what I'm asking for is that staff work with the Center for Election Science and give them an opportunity to give their presentation that they had initially requested to us a year ago. Um, so that we at least have the background and the education to then make a decision as to whether it's something we want to look into further. If it's going to take a lot of time, maybe it needs to be a strategic initiative next year, but at least to get the information upfront. And so we start thinking about it and have an idea of what we want to do. So um, so what I'm asking for from council is the approval of asking staff to coordinate presentation at one of our city council meetings from the Center for Election Science on approval voting. And really just educate us more on on what that would look like with the processes and and who's already implemented this process.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, council members, let's go around the room maybe once if we could, see if there are any questions. The Councilmember Mason on which to harass us. Councilmember Hamilton, thank you. Saw the mic come on.
So, um, yeah, I I'm in, I'm in favor of this. I mean, the from, you know, we we, I absolutely need more education on on approval voting before you know, make any kind of a of a of a serious consideration. But from what, from what what I know so far, the um, it encourages much more positive campaigning, which I think would be healthy for our community. Um, and it, you know, if there, there, there are many examples across the country of very successful implementation. So I think it would make sense to add to to learn more, just so we can, just so we have all the information to make a, to make a informed decision. So I'm in favor.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, I I'm, I'm in favor of of having a presentation by all means. I think that would be fine. Um, if you go to their website, they have some YouTube videos on it. It it gets a little complicated at times, but if you listen through it, um, um, my my gut feeling first is like, sure, why not? Listen and then we can determine if that's really needed.
Okay, um, Councilmember Salazar.
It's an interesting theory and it seems to me more of a, an academic sort of exercise. In a way, you know, looking back at uh, In a way, you know, looking back at, I was just thinking at the results of our last election, in a way, it played out very similar to approval voting because when we do at-large elections, we have multiple seats available, and so people do cast multiple votes. And so in looking at some of the examples and how they play out and how that process works, in a way, we've sort of, we have something that's very similar to approval voting. People approve of two, you know, the highest two vote getters, and that could be in any combination, which is what you get with approval voting. I guess in approval voting, you can vote for even more people, and that's where I think the public might get a little confused in terms of really understanding, you know, what happened? I didn't vote for those two people. I don't know anybody who voted for those two. How did that work out? And I think in some of the alternate voting methods, that ends up being a problem where people don't understand the implications sometimes of some combination of voting. So, I mean, it's interesting. For me, I think I would be a little more interested in seeing how things play out after we have districts, and if we're going to get broad participation. But, you know, I've seen in other surrounding communities, once they go to districts, they might get one or two candidates in each district, in which case this would have absolutely no effect. But we would still be doing the same old thing. There's only two people voting, I mean, two people running. You can't cast more than one vote. So, you know, would it be worth the effort to go to a different system where it's not necessary? So I would actually recommend that we wait and see how things, you know, how the dust settles after we're in districts, and then see if there's a need to do that, to change the method. But, you know, if there's no problem, then let's not try to fix it. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. I'll just, I won't repeat, but I kind of share a lot of the sentiments that Councilmember Salazar just articulated. I won't. You don't have to hear me repeat that. So, but at this time, what I'm writing down is we wanted to wait for the district process and have that so we don't add additional confusion on other things, and we have three that wish to have staff look into, request that staff research the approval process and have a presentation to the city council. Am I correct in what I've stated? Vice Mayor Medina?
I just want to.
Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I'm in favor of receiving a presentation from the group and not having staff really have to do anything at all, just basically a presentation.
Yeah, and I apologize. That's what I was trying to correct at the beginning. I do agree that it should just be staff really contacting them, inviting them to come and do a presentation where we can learn more about approval voting.
How about that?
That's what I was approving as well.
Okay, so if I said something like request that staff reach out and have that group make a presentation, that would probably mean, and staff can correct me, would mean a special meeting, you know, because we don't want to, as you know, our calendar is getting full for this year, but that we are not looking for staff to, like what I've just heard.
Yeah.
Not having to research, not having to put staff reports together and all that. I know staff would probably say, however, it's going to, it's going to have some of our time taken, and that can't be helped, so. But I'm hearing the majority that that is correct, the way that we're just modified?
Yeah, I would say looking at today's, just like today's agenda, just a presentation would be fine. And so I would say staff scheduling, staff scheduling, and I would even go as far as to say it doesn't, if it can fit into one of our future agendas, it doesn't have to be a special meeting. I don't want to box staff in so much to have to do that. So up to their discretion, but just to schedule the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that did that a pretty good time. Councilmember Mason, though, is there anything else that you have and that you wanted to say under council comments? And colleagues, if there's anything from you, if you could raise your virtual hands so you can get around the room. Anything else, Councilmember Mason, for tonight?
I'm trying to find, if you can come back to me. Let me just find the information.
Any other council members? Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to repeat a request for the volunteers that are needed at our school sites for supervision during noon, especially if somebody has the ability to do that, that would be great. You can call the district office or any of the schools that are, any of the nearby schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mason?
Thank you. I just want to remind the public that there is a vaccination event on October 16th at Bel Air from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m., and that's going to be for the first dose, and there's a second dose vaccination event on November 6th. So again, Saturday, October 16th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it's going to be at Bel Air. Walk-ups are welcome, and as always, you know, appointments are preferred, but they'll take walk-ins. So if you're not vaccinated yet, you can still get your vaccination. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple things for myself, and then we'll adjourn in memory. One is I attended the state in Sacramento, the California League of Cities Conference, and that was the Voting Delegate. That was on September 22nd through the 24th. Of course, there are general sessions, the opening sessions, there's breakout sessions throughout the Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. On Friday, then occurs the Voting Delegate, and then the installation of the new officers that have come on board. I want to say that it was nice to go. It was nice to get back because it was very hot in Sacramento and walking back in front of your hotel. A lot of steps, but too much heat for the mile walk each way. So, you know, and there were, I will say, we had other folks. When I say other folks, other of our neighboring communities that had two, four, and also I got, I heard of, you know, they get per diems and they get gas and toll, which we pay for all of that. So I appreciate what we do because, you know, we do give a verse up on that, too. Also, I wanted to, there was a San Mateo County Economic Recovery Roundtable on September 29th, which I attended, which is beautiful. But what I did attend in person on October 1st was the Eagle Scout Ceremony, and that was for Troop 4172 of San Bruno. What was really interesting and unique about this one, it was the inaugural class, not just in San Bruno, but around the areas, for young ladies to become Eagle Scouts for the first time. So there was Katie and Haley, who I met, listened to their speeches, and I think our future is good hands. But it was very nice to be a part of that, present them with certificates of achievement and being asked to speak and learn and meet, and it was exciting. Had you heard their speeches, you'd be very proud of these young ladies. It was great, and they are part of the inaugural class. Okay, with nothing else, what I would like to do is adjourn in memory of Mormon E. Dunham. He was born on May 9th, 1937, and passed on August 28th, 2001, at the age of 84, from San Bruno. And so he passed away on that Saturday, and in his early years, he worked in a sawmill. After graduating from Hillborough High School in 1955, he joined the Navy in 1956. He was an electrician at Point Shipyard. After his service, he was a patrol officer here in San Bruno for 20 years, and during that time, was a frequent destruction derby winner across multiple years where he was known as Stormin' Norman. So you can see Mr., you can see Stormin' Norman on the left with our old decals and city logo. And so it was important, and this was brought forward to me by the chief, which I appreciate, San Bruno resident, a gentleman who served our nation, and certainly protected the community of San Bruno for 20 years, and our blessing. So on behalf of all of the city and the city council, I would like to adjourn this meeting in his honor. With that, I appreciate everything tonight and wish everybody the best, and we will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on October 24th, 21, at 7:00 o'clock. Good evening.